I will go ahead and call our meeting to order. Looks like we've got a big crowd today.
Yeah.
People got here by boat and jet ski with the weather. So, thank you for being here. As a reminder, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent at this point. Also, today's meeting's being livestreamed. And with that, I've asked Ms. Altman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Ms. Wright to do our invocation.
Pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here today and to be able to come together, Lord, and to make decisions, Lord, for these children in the state of Mississippi. Lord, pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance, Lord. Just be with those that work with the department, Lord. We know that they're very diligent in coming up with policies and strategies, Lord, that impact on our schools throughout the state. Pray that you would protect our schools and watch over our schools for the teachers, the administration, administrators, and the students that are there, Lord. Also, Lord, just pray that you would watch over our country. We are so thankful, Lord, that we live in a country that has provided the freedoms that we all and for the men and women who sacrificed their lives so that we can have those freedoms, Lord. And pray, Lord, that you would just be with us as we continue through this meeting and as we leave this meeting. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Now, board members, you should have in front of you the minutes from our January 21st meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
There's a motion with the second from Dr. Kelly. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's the 17th, okay. Just a quick, actually, January 17th. Let the minutes reflect that. Okay, so now we'll move into approval of agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If so, I'll entertain a motion to do so now. Hearing none. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull out for discussion? If so, I'll entertain a motion to do so now. All right. F is approval to begin Administrative Procedures Act to establish State Board Policy III regarding districts of innovation in schools. And then, I'm sorry, aye. Aye is approval to modify certain literature assessment guidelines for instructional support and administrative endorsement areas. Want to pull those out for discussion? Okay. We need to take these separately, so I need a motion for consent agenda, item F. Motion in a second. To pull for discussion. Boom. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and likewise for aye, I need a motion in a second.
Move.
Ever signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, so we'll pull out for staff. We've got Dr. Oakley, Dr. Vanderford, and then Dr. Vanderford for F and aye for discussions before we get to the pool. So, the agenda has been amended and we'll need a vote now to adopt the fully amended agenda.
Move.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the agenda has been amended. Nope. Right. Move to recognition ceremony.
Good morning, Dr. Dean, Dr. Wright, and board members. We have some proud parents and school and district administrators with us today. It is now my honor to present to you the board recognitions for the month of February. Today, we honor students who earned a perfect score of 36 on the ACT in 2018 and the MDE Employee of the Month. As you know, the ACT College Entrance Exam is based on what students learned in high school and provides personalized information designed to tell students how well they are prepared to succeed in college. Earning a perfect score requires hard work, dedication to learning, and successful completion of coursework needed to perform well on the exam. Being the conscientious students that they are, some of them could not join us today, and we will send them their certificates. For the others who are here, students, as I call your name, please come forward and join Dr. Dean and Dr. Wright at the front of the room. From Clinton Public Schools, Clinton High School, Isaac Martinlich. And Kevin Zhang. Kevin's mother is here. Shi Guo, an MDE employee in the Office of Technology and Strategic Services. From DeSoto County Schools, John Barch, DeSoto Central High School. Caleb Owens, Lewisburg High School. From Hancock County School District, Michael Stile, Diberville High School. You've got to make some room for...
It's a great problem to have.
It is. It's a great problem to have, indeed. We have, from Lamar County School District, Carly Grace Kendrick from Oak Grove High From Ocean Springs School District, Ocean Springs High School, Drake Desher. And from West Point Consolidated School District, West Point High School, Jimmy Bateman. Let's congratulate these students on this outstanding... Congratulations again, and we wish you well in your future endeavors. I think we got all the pictures earlier. Oh. All right, parents. Get your cameras ready.
That's right. Yeah, how about the parents stand, please?
Parents of school and district. They're not shy about the spotlight. Our final recognition for today is the Employee of the Month, Yolanda Bacon. Yolanda, please join Dr. Dean and Dr. Wright at the front of the room. Yolanda has been with the MDE since 2005 and works in the Office of Child Nutrition as a program specialist for the Child and Adult Care Food Program. Yolanda continually shows adaptability and a willingness to be a team player. As a result, her experience and expertise made her the in-house expert on the Family Daycare Home Program. She uses her knowledge and skills to assist coworkers, supervisors, and sponsors. Yolanda provides information in a positive and professional manner that fosters cooperation, pride, and trust within the program. She consistently meets her goals and helps others stay motivated and reach their goals as well. In addition, due to her program knowledge, positive attitude, and great work ethic... Ooh, how great. Yolanda was recently nominated by her supervisor to represent the Office of Child Nutrition on a USDA task force. She was selected by USDA and became a part of the select group around the country to assist in the development of new training for all state agencies. Wow. In the absence of her son Cory and daughter Mayo, who are away at college, Yolanda is joined by colleagues from the Office of Child Nutrition. Congratulations, Yolanda, on your selection as Employee of the Month. You're welcome to make any brief remarks at this time.
First of all, I'd like to say this is really important. Yes, we all recognize that, and I would like to thank this staff, this group, and the entire OSCE staff, John Pittman.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations again. This concludes our board recognitions for this month.
I'll make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman. When we do these recognitions again like this, for example, these students we just recognized, could we have them maybe in the future, tell us what their plans are? I picked out several computer people in this group. I picked out some engineers. So, I just think it'd be interesting to see what their interests are and what their plans are.
A great suggestion, and we'll absolutely do that. And I will say, several of you, please stay. This is great to see how this board operates and works, but this is an excellent opportunity, should you need to leave, and probably go study quantum physics or astrology or something. Now's a good chance for you to depart, and we will ask Dr. Wright to move into her report here as the crowd sort of dissipates and...
They're like, oh, where'd the time go? Look where it went.
Look at the time!
It's heading out the door.
Yeah. I know you guys are doing important things. Yes, ma'am.
Ready? All right, very good. Well, good morning to everybody. I wanted to let you know, we had been going through a process with our school improvement grant schools. Those are the schools our lowest performing schools. We have been interviewing them and asking them to come in with their board chair, the superintendent, principal, teacher, parents, to really talk to the folks that are doing the interviewing around what their process has been, what their plans are, how they're going to be using their vendors for support. But this took a lot of people, so let me just say, this department conducted over 100 interviews with 100 schools. So, if you are in the room as a staff member that helped participate in that, would you please stand? A big thank you to all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This impressed us enough that we are going to be doing something a little bit different with our updates with you. So, we, it's very helpful, the leadership team, the executive leadership team actually conducted, I want to say, 12 of the interviews ourselves. And the beauty of this is it really gave us an opportunity to listen to themes that were floating through around ways that we could support and further support our lowest performing schools. So, we have decided we're going to meet as a large group, not just the leadership team, but the people that work with school improvement, our people in curriculum, et cetera, to really be talking about what those themes are, and then how can we then, as a department, better support these schools. The other part of what we're going to be doing is bringing you quarterly updates. So, I think it's important, the leadership team is going to be monitoring these on a more frequent basis, but we thought it would be helpful then to bring updates to the board on a quarterly basis around how the schools are doing, what this help has been supplied, et cetera, et cetera. So, I just wanted to let you know, we're looking forward to that. I think it will be very beneficial. A couple of weeks ago, I was invited to attend a meeting, a commission on equity and opportunity, and this commission advises the Connecticut Legislature. And Connecticut had reached out to us because of all of the progress that we are making around early literacy and our K-3 plan and strategy. So, Connecticut invited Mississippi up to basically testify before this commission. Several legislators were there. Pete Smith went with me, Kelly Butler went with me, and it was just a great way for us to lay out our strategies, because that's something that Connecticut's looking at. And just most recently, I got a call yesterday, we are going to be visiting Louisiana. Louisiana is reexamining its K-3 strategy and looking at the results that Mississippi's gotten, so they want us to come down and lay out what we've done over the past few years to receive the results that we've received. So, more good news for us to be able to help our colleagues, and that's what it's all about, is being able to reach out and help others without having to reinvent the wheel. I attended the latest Brod Academy, so we are down, I can't believe it's two more sessions in May and in September, and I'll be finished with the Brod Academy. So, it was very beneficial every time I go, but this time we focused a lot on low performing schools and on how different people around the nation are dealing with that. We had several superintendents who've been highly successful, urban superintendents, and so they were in speaking to us, so a lot of ideas that we were able to come back with from that as well. Pete Smith and Dr. Cole and I met with Scott Waller from MEC. We are also forming a very tighter partnership with them around career and technical education, making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our businesses around the state. And so, Scott has committed to that, and I'm meeting with his Board of Directors, I believe it's at the end of the month, so that they can know what we're doing, and we can hear from them what they still need from us in terms of programming around the state. I was fortunate enough to be at the AASA Conference. I did a presentation along with other panel members about women who lead, and I got to say, it was a standing room only in this room, and we acknowledged, I think, the three gentlemen that were there, but the rest were all women, wanting to know exactly what we had to say about women in leadership and strategies that we had employed and how we got to where we were. And then I brought greetings to the Mississippi School Boards Association Annual Conference yesterday, and really was just a way to really let all of those board members know, superintents that were in the room, anybody that was in the room, all the great news about what's happening around Mississippi. So, when I got started, I said, take out your paper and pencil. I said, so you can be jotting these things down, so if you're running into somebody, you'll be able to share all the good news that's happening in Mississippi, and I think that was well received. We also, for the first time, we've had a lot of feedback, and rightfully so. You know, I do my A-tours of all the A districts, but there's a lot of other districts and schools that have improved their letter grades. So, this year, what we also did, I mailed letters and certificates to 26 districts and 281 schools that had improved their letter grades. So, everybody got an official letter of congratulations and also a certificate that they can display in their schools as well. 281. Mm-hmm. And that's just about a third of our schools, so that's significant to see that a third of our schools went up at least one letter grade and some went up two. Also, last time, we were talking about the child development centers and the accountability system with the child development centers, and the team went back and talked about what is it that we can do. So, we're going to be taking a recommendation forward to the, first, to the Accountability Task Force, which is where the first stop is, obviously, to talk about what we, our proposal is. And our proposal, because we must test, so that's not an option, but what we do have an option of doing is how then we report those scores. So, in legislation, actually, it's code 372391, that addresses the child development centers on the coast, so it only speaks to those that are on the coast, we are going to make a recommendation to the Accountability Task Force that the scores of those children go back to their home schools, because not all of the children that are in those child development centers are necessarily in Pascagoula or necessarily in Harrison County, because there are other districts that send children there. So, we felt this would be a way to do that. The scores still get reported, but they get reported back to their home schools rather than as an individual child development center. And if the task force then agrees with that, that proposal then moves on to the commission. The commission meets, I believe it's March 7th, and then if the commission then accepts that recommendation, then that will be coming to you for final approval at the March 28th meeting. So, I wanted to let you know that we have been working on that and think we've come up with a pretty good solution. The other thing, I want to recognize, two people, I don't know if Lisa Comentara's here. Lisa's always here. You might know the time I'm going to recognize her, she's not here. So, Lisa, if you remember, was the executive director, she used to be the executive director of MASA. Well, Lisa just now was selected as the executive director of the Charter Authorizer Board. So, she started that job this past week, I believe, and so, big hats off to Lisa as continuing to be a partner, just in a different role. And I didn't know if you were aware, and I'm looking for Quentin, who's always here, and I don't see him either, Quentin has just been nominated as the Chair of the Charter Authorizer Board. So, good news for, good news for us, yeah, exactly, he's a good role for him to play. So, I wanted to recognize those two people. And last but not least, our spotlight video, you're going to love this. You notice these four ladies in the front row with their little t-shirts on? So, this is, this was a video that we put together, but the process was a media, a social media challenge is what it was, and it's called Next Level Up. So, you can see their little t-shirts underneath their jackets. And the literacy team actually created the video, wanting to challenge schools around the state to show as they're preparing their third graders this year for the third grade assessment, that we're really looking for third graders to go to the next level up. Because remember, this year, instead of just passing above the lowest achievement level, they must have passed now above the two lowest achievement levels. So, this video, you need to know, has gone viral, so hats off to our literacy team for that. And it's also, to let you know, it reached 43,000 people in less than one month. So, what it also did was it challenged schools to create videos around Next Level Up. So, you're going to see two videos that were created today, but you also need to know that even on, even our Congressman, Bennie Thompson, created his own video on Next Level Up. So, yeah, so you'll, which I thought was kind of cool. And the TV programs of JT, WTV, WLBT, and WLOX also feature stories around this. So, I, hats off to the literacy team, because they really wanted to create, I think, a real sense of excitement about this and charge, you know, get children charged up and teachers charged up, as well as building awareness around the fact that the bar's a little higher. It's not yet a proficiency, but we're working on that, because as you know, it's level four that's proficiency, so they've got to score at levels three, four, and five in order to be considered for promotion without good cause exemption. But you're going to see Nora Davis Magnet School in Laurel, and Henderson Ward Stewart Elementary School in Starkville, which is also one of our literacy support schools. You're going to see their two videos, but I want to recognize folks that are in the audience today, because they deserve a lot of credit. So, Dr. Kimiana Burke, obviously, our state literacy director, LeAnn Cheesman, our Assistant State Literacy Coordinator. Stand up, girls! Jill Hoda, our Assistant State Literacy Coordinator, Casey Sullivan, another Assistant State Literacy Coordinator, and Kristen Wells, another Assistant State Coordinator. So, hats off to you guys. And now, we'll see our videos.
Five, four, three, two, one. I'm Kimiana Burke, State Literacy Director for the Mississippi Department of Education, and these ladies are my Assistant State Literacy Coordinators.
I'm Jill Hoda.
I'm Casey Taylor.
I'm LeAnn Cheesman.
And I'm Kristen...
And I'm Kristen Wells.
Next Level Up, Mississippi!
It's 2019, and third grade students must score a level three or above to be promoted to fourth grade. Mississippi, we want to know how you are preparing your third grade students for the next level. Are you ready for the challenge? You have one week from the date you are challenged to upload a brief, two to three-minute video to your school and district Facebook pages showing how you are preparing your students for the next level. When posting your videos, use the hashtags #NextLevelUpChallengeMX and #NextLevelUp. Each week, our literacy leadership team will spotlight one school on the Mississippi Department of Education's social media pages. Be sure to tag the Mississippi Department of Education when you upload your video. We want to see you put your creative minds to the test. Let's get everyone involved. Encourage your staff, parents, and community members to share the video on social media. For more information about the literacy-based promotion app, visit strongreadersms.com, MDE-K12-guard, and be sure to follow the Mississippi Department of Education on Facebook and Twitter. It's time to level up literacy, Mississippi! We challenge Julie Fancher, Henderson Ward Stewart Elementary, in Starkville Octumah School District. Dr. Kiana Pendleton at Nora Davis Elementary and Laurel Public School District. And Dr. Shannon Whitehead at McNeil Elementary School in Canton Public School District. Remember, principals, at the end of your video, you must challenge another school in a different Mississippi school district.
Next Level Up, Mississippi!
Five, four, three, two, one.
Level up, level up, level up, level up, level up, level up.
I'm Bonita Brown.
I'm Ashley Nichols.
I'm Paige Phillips.
And I'm Julie Fancher, Principal of Henderson Ward Stewart Elementary School in Starkville, Mississippi. And these are my wonderful Assistant Principals. We've been challenged by MDE, and it's time to level up!
Check out the ways that we're preparing our third graders for the next level.
Dad talks a lot to understand our purpose and discover our potential.
Reading benchmark. And this is my math benchmark. And my first benchmark, my school was a four, and my, on my second benchmark, my goal was a five.
Yeah. So we've got a common assessment Thursday.
But what I really was impressed by was that they kept their goal so high. So I was curious to see.
Parent literacy nights educate our families so they can support us at home.
I've been so pleased with, with our school, because Henderson Ward Stewart, I feel like the parents are really given a lot of support, they're given information, we're given resources of how to help our kids at home. We just went to a literacy night last week, and it was fabulous. We had breakout sessions. I personally went to the reading strategies and got some good tips on how to sound out words and, and break down the consonant blends and things to help.
Celebrating our students' successes brings excitement to our learning.
We do this dance every morning to get our reggaets out, and this is really fun, and we really need to focus.
I'm into the class, and I know my teacher gives me thinking cap on it, and you know I'm learning quickly.
Leveling up is a part of expecting excellence every day.
It's time to level up, Mississippi! We challenge Paula Agnew, Principal of Verona Elementary School in the Lee County School District. Cardinals, you're next!
You're smart! You are excellent!
Okay. Remember what I taught you. Use all of your tagging strategies and believe in yourself. Get your score up, level up.
I don't know what y'all talking about.
I don't know what y'all talking about. I want a five.
Certainly respect that. So the proper terminology is a person with an intellectual disability. And so as we move forward with this development, we'll make sure that we use the right term. And I definitely appreciate the community reaching out to me and making sure that we're saying the right and most appropriate terminology for that group. A couple of more kind of housekeeping announcements. We finally have got our Workforce and Career Technical Education Committee together. Mr. Sugg showing his top 50-ness has agreed to chair. Members will be Buddy Bailey, myself. The area focus of the subcommittee will be to focus on sufficient workforce development pathways, ensuring state board policy aligns with other workforce-focused entities such as SWIB, Community College Board, Department of Employment Security. So very much look forward to that focus. One last announcement that we're getting into subcommittees. We will, at the end of this meeting, take a vote on whether or not we can move our March 21st meeting to March 28th. If we have quorum, we'll move it. And if we do move it, we'll have our tour of the Mississippi School of Blind and Deaf moved to the 27th. So we'll talk more about that at the end. So I'll transition now into the report on our subcommittee meetings. And happy to say historically, we had our first subcommittee on early childhood that met this morning at 8:30. And Mrs. Rye agreed to chair that. So if you'll do a report on what we discussed.
It was our first meeting and we got a lot of updates about the different grants that were going on and what was happening with those grants. One of them being the NASB and the trainings that are taking place for, that are being focused on early learning and the policies that are in early learning. The KELA grant, they have finally got all of their coaches situated, have trained, and they're starting to get into the classrooms and do active coaching. We've also received the governor's grant and the plan going moving forward with that is to use it to basically enhance the work that the department is already doing with some of the resources in professional development and family engagement. So that's our update.
And one of the things we discussed towards the end is we all agree that we think that we might have a really unique opportunity with an election year coming up. We have state leaders who are running for office and talking about early childhood education in a way that I've not really heard since I've been watching politics in Mississippi. And we really want to use this opportunity through, this is Rye's leadership of the subcommittee, to develop policy that those that are in power will consider and really take advantage of kind of a moment, I think, that we have on this issue. Next subcommittee, Dr. Kelly, School Performance and Accountability.
It meet this morning at nine o'clock. We had no action items, but we had three items that we discussed for information. The first one was we authorized the accountability office to do an internal audit on the Office of Career and Technical Education. That was done. That does not need to come to the board. The other thing is that we received the audit from a report of school districts, colleges and universities. Today's report focused on secondary schools. And we learned that we had seven school districts that did not report at all this year. The reports were due in March, I believe, of last year. Is that true, last year? March? Yeah, last year in March, they were due. We did not get any reports that year from that school, those school districts. We had two school districts that hadn't reported in two years. That was a real concern for us. And we talked a lot about the ramifications when you don't receive reports, particularly over a two-year period. One of the other things we talked about, and there was a lot of interest around, some of the findings that are found in those audits are not acted on until a four-year period has passed. And what we learned was that this was because the state auditor's office was backed up, could not accommodate all of the information. But we thought four years was an awful long time to let any finding go without being fully vetted. So the committee said that they were going to make a suggestion and have a conversation with the state auditor to see what could be done about that. The last item we got an update on was student representatives on this board. There was a lot of excitement around that particular item. We had 52 students from school districts all across the state that applied for membership on this board. It was a two-step process. First, there was a written application and there was to be a video. And for your application to be complete, you had to do both. Only 37 of the 52 had complete applications. So that's really exciting to know that we have that level of interest from around the state. The next step is those applications will come to a subcommittee of the accountability committee who will look at those, vet them, and there will be some recommendations coming to you for final decisions. So stay tuned.
Great news. Wow. Really great idea, Dr. Kelly. Okay, the last subcommittee meeting is mine, the legislative subcommittee. I'm going to ask Pete Smith to please come and give us an update on what's happening at the legislature.
Good morning. So Chairman wanted me to talk to you, I guess, give you some updates on a couple of bills that are moving through the process. We're at the halfway point. Some say we're probably over the halfway point considering that they might try to get out, sign it, die, maybe a week or so early. So that's pretty exciting, but we still have a long way to go. Bills just crossed over into each other's houses. So the education bills that passed the Senate are now moving to the House and vice versa. The first major deadline for bills originating in their original chamber died last Thursday. And I'll bring you up to speed on a couple of hours that I like to say died the first day because nothing's really dead, dead, dead until sign it, die. And so now both chambers are taking up the first iterations of all the state agencies appropriation bills. So that's kind of where we are now. But Jason wanted me to hit on a couple of bills. First of all, we did receive our first draft of our appropriations bill. It's a starter bill. It's a bill that originated in the House. It has a, most of the things that were in it last year that originated in the House are in this bill. We expected to change a lot when it gets to the Senate, particularly with the teacher pay raise. Also included in this bill, this House went on it and appropriated or shot the first proposal for appropriation of $26 million, which will cover the PERS expenses should a teacher pay raise go into effect of $1,000 that will be phased in over the next two years. So again, that's House Bill 1643, if you want to go out and take a look at it, but we do expect it to change. It does have a reverse repealer in it, meaning that, you know, if it somehow gets passed without things in it that any chamber wants, then it won't go into effect. The teacher pay raise, the Senate did take a position and passed out of its committee and off its floor, a $1,000 teacher pay raise, which will be implemented over a two-year period, so 500 a year. That bill was amended by two senators to include a extra check, if you will, in the 12th month of the year. So the teachers would get, instead of getting a pay raise spread out equally 12 months out of the year, they would get an extra check with the pay raise in it in December. Myself, Dr. Gavin and Donna Nest have reached out to a group, the School Business Officers Association, to, because they will be the ones that have to implement this and wanted to figure out what would be the challenges. And boy, there are a lot of challenges to this amendment, but we will present those to the legislature and see if there might be any workarounds. And if not, then, you know, so be it. But anyway, we've done our due diligence in figuring out what the pitfalls will be. So that bill now goes to the House. Just a couple of amendments that were offered on our appropriations bill in the House was one of an amendment, I think of $3,500 cross-the-board pay raise on the House side. So I know that once they get the Senate version, that they would probably amend it to increase the amount of pay raise going forward. So that bill most likely will go to conference and be settled at the end of the session.
Pay raise for who?
Teachers.
Better than that $1.37 a day deal.
Yeah, and I think that was the catalyst for the amendment is giving it to them basically in one check at the end of this, in December versus spreading it out over 12 months. So we'll see how, yeah, we'll see how that goes. And then the final bill Chairman wanted me to discuss was House Bill 688, which is affectionately known as the Corinth Bill. Just want to let you know that's still going through the process. A reverse repealer was put in that bill and it's being sent over to the Senate for further discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Smith, I think the education community as well as the teachers would appreciate you and Dr. Gavin's for stepping in to try to get more than that $1,000 deal, you know, which I personally feel was an embarrassment as well. It let them know that the department is behind trying to help them.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's important for our education community to know.
Yes, sir.
What are the odds that amendment will actually become effective, the $3,500 versus the $1,000?
I think the odds for the $3,500 are pretty slim. There might be some compromise between 1 and 3,500. I'm not sure what that would be, but I think 35 is a bit of a stretch.
What would be the fiscal, you know, if it's 50 for 1,000, so 150 for 3,000?
So just three years ago, there was a $2,500 teacher pay raise phased in over two years. I think they got $1,000 the first year and $1,500 the second year. And that was roughly $150 million.
Ms. Smith, clarification. The House bill that was, that came out of the House at the $1,000, but it never was, didn't it die on the calendar or am I wrong?
Yes, correct. The House has not taken a position yet in, by virtue of a vote on a bill for a teacher pay raise. The Senate has, and so the Senate bill is coming to the House.
Okay. So the warrant from the House really died on the calendar?
Yes. So they'll be, the vehicle now will be working through the Senate, the Senate version.
I don't want to go down the rabbit trail of the MAP funding, but I do want to highlight and affirm what you said, that the $26 million that's a plus-up from MAP last year is strictly to cover the PERS increase from the $1,000.
Right.
And so that money gets, you know, essentially individualized, but doesn't really go to the application of education in any way other than the individual, you know, who's being paid and getting part of his or her retirement. But to say there's a $26 million increase in MAP, let's just recognize where the money's going. It's going to the PERS system to cover the $1,000 pay raise. So it's flat funding and covering the PERS. As it stands now, there's a lot of game left to be played, we all know. But just so that everyone's aware of, you know, where that money goes. Other questions or comments?
Yes, on the, Ms. Chairman, you mentioned that you was going to ask Mr. Smith to drop a bill that helped those two schools down on the coast. But I've been watching it on the updates and I haven't, I didn't see anything.
Correct. There was a bill dropped and there was a bill considered. Chairman Bennett didn't bring it out in committee because as we dropped the bill and was discussing the issue, we came up with this solution. They thought we could do it administratively. And so that's when we approached Dr. Wright and Jason to start discussing that. And they'd much rather us to handle it than to pass a bill.
That brings us back to where we were last month.
Well, so the change in the law wasn't necessary because we could handle it administratively. The designating these schools as schools is an artifact of the Department of Education, not the legislature. So by being presumptuous, the Accountability Task Force will say, we're not going to code these as schools. We're going to say they're child development centers on the existing code as they already exist in the code. Students will still be tested per federal law under MAP-A, but the individual test scores would be assigned back to the individual district. So we're achieving what we're trying to achieve, which is not giving these schools an F, you know, as opposed to ensuring that we're testing each student with accountability, but those grades will be assigned to their home district.
But that's all them concerned about, is hanging that F.
Yeah, now that, you know, again, we'll get the report in March, but assuming this goes the way that I hope it goes, then that solves the problem without using the legislature.
Correct.
Are you likely to get pushback from district superintendents with those scores coming back to that district?
I'd be surprised because the numbers are so small. I mean, you know, any one district is probably sending like one or two kids. I mean, it's not like you're sending 100 children, you know, and then all those 100 scores go back. I think because the N size is going to be so small, I would be surprised if it was.
I think that would be consistent with other districts who don't have those child development centers who are owning those kids anyhow.
That's right. That's exactly right.
It's a level, a level for playing field.
Yeah, it does. Because there are a lot of districts that maintain these children inside their own districts and do not send them to separate facilities. So Mr. Bailey brings up a really good point. Yep.
Well, during the initial conversation, there were a couple of superintendents who also voiced that same opinion. Why don't you just send the grades back to our district? So appears to be the route we're going to take.
Yes, ma'am.
To the point that you made with the Corinth Bill, so to speak. In the world where I come from, federal law supersedes state law, state law supersedes local ordinances. So the point needs to be made, and I'm sure you're making it, that we don't need to be put in that position. I mean, federal law is what it says, and that's what we have to enforce. And so that needs to be made clear.
Ma'am.
Are you doing that?
Yes, sir.
Let the record reflect, we've said this is federal law. That's an important and a very valid point. We follow the law. Okay? Any other comments?
Let us know if we need to send Ms. Altman over there.
Heavy hitter. All right. We'll move on to.
Chairman, could I ask Dr. Wright a question? You mentioned in your report about the grant for low performance schools, Tupelo question. I was happy to hear that the department is going to be going out helping those schools that's getting the grant. Will the department determine what help that will be given through the interviews of the one they selected? And the second part of that, will the department determine what help will be given again that those districts ask for additional help beyond what the department said that they're going to do?
I think it goes both ways because I think that, you know, we are looking at the data to determine, you know, what help they need. For example, our literacy coaches are a perfect example. We use that data to send our literacy coaches to the districts that have the lowest scores. But through the interview process, they were here telling us what they were going to do. And they, there's a last page of the whole presentation that asks, what can MDE continue to do to support you? So every district that came forward listed what they wanted from, so to me, it's got to be a partnership. It's got to be both of us. It's, we can help them, and they need to let us know what additional help that they might need as well.
I was happy to hear that because it takes away now that saying that we can't go in and tell you what to do. If it's a partnership and we know what they need, I'm assuming I hear you say that we're going to address that, whether they want it or not.
Well, we've got to address some things. I mean, because there's a reason that they're all at the bottom, right? So we need to make sure that the strategies that they're employing, we have confidence in that are going to get them the results. That's exactly right. So we will provide that kind of feedback. One of the things we asked was, they're giving a lot of money to vendors to come in and provide professional development. A lot of money. And so our question is, are what the vendors providing what the schools need? Or are what the vendors providing whatever the vendors decide they want to do?
Very good point.
And so what we're saying is, we want the vendors, and we even intend to meet with the vendors quite honestly, to say, please make sure that what you're structuring in terms of service delivery is intentional around what the data say that the school needs. So that's something.
Very, very, very good point. And the reason why I'm saying that, they're spending all this money on these vendors. And quietly as it kept, a lot of the leadership don't know that those vendors are not giving them what they need. And I'm hoping that the department can step in and say, well, look, vendor A is not producing what they're going to give us results. You need to go and do X. I'm hoping that's what I'm hearing.
That's exactly what you're hearing. In fact, we have even been discussing internally developing an approved list of vendors so that vendors that we know are providing quality service. Our neighbor Louisiana is already doing that. They've already put their vendors through a pretty strict vetting process. And so any district that's going to be using a vendor must choose from the vendor list based on the results that that vendor has gotten.
When I was acting like an alligator in a dried-up pond about those vendors some years ago. Alligator likes water. If it's a dried-up pond, they're going to raise a lot of sand. We had, we had an approved list.
Oh, okay.
Back when we first started, there's supposed to be an approved list out there because I'm sure it needs to be updated. But at one point, we did what you said. You know, we had a list of vendors that we were telling districts. Now, this is approved, you can select from this group. And I hope we get back to that.
That's exactly where we're headed. And because I think there's just too much money that's being spent that is not getting the results that we need. And it's frustrating, I'm sure, to schools because they're coming in with these interviews and, you know, they're here again and they're here again. And something is just not working. So that's one of the reasons we're going to get together and say, how can we better assist these schools and how can we do a better job of monitoring so that we can get assistance as soon as it's needed? So that's all of the conversations taking place inside the department. Well, this is, this is the opportunity that we're taking to have an internal discussion and to also make sure that we are not overstepping in terms of what the federal law is requiring under our title dollars and things of that nature. But I do think this is a good opportunity for us to say, you know, let us help you select some of this because we do know, I mean, look at our letters training alone. I mean, our letters training has gotten such positive results. So why would you pick another vendor to come in and provide some additional kind of training if it's not aligned to the letters training, which we know is aligned to teaching children the foundational skills of reading? So it's those kinds of conversations that we need to be having with principals and teachers and superintendents. Yep.
I want to make sure the minutes reflect the alligator in the pond so that we can, I want to go back and read that.
A dried pond, that's right.
Yes, correct. Dried pond. Thank you very much. All right. So moving to the discussion and approval of board items, Dr. Wright, we've got, number one, information progress on the Mississippi Department of Education's five-year strategic plan.
Actually, that's the Mississippi State Board of Education's strategic plan. So just saying. But it's ours as well, just kidding, Chairman. We've put together a presentation, obviously, for the public so you can kind of get an idea around your six goals, what the status of these goals are. There is a document, I know you, it's in your, it's in your backup, but I want the public to know because we're going to post this on our website. This is the in-depth, item by item, goal by goal actions that the department has taken. There were just way too many to put up on a slide. So I want people to know that simply what you see is a slide, it's not the sum total of what has been done. You will find, I believe it's 16 pages that are single-spaced, giving you information about the department's work. And I think it's really important for the public to know, this is just within one year's work. So we're talking about work that was done just this past year. And we've not put in here ongoing kinds of things that are, we continue to do. These are new actions that the department has taken by goal. So you know as well as I do, you know, we are very intentional around making sure our vision and mission are out front, no matter what presentation that we're, the department is giving and no matter to whom. We need to make sure that everybody is focusing on the same thing. And likewise, that everybody's focusing on the same six goals. So these are the goals that I reviewed yesterday with MSBA, and there had to have been more than 500 people that were there at that meeting with school board members, et cetera, to talk about where we are headed as a state and how we are monitoring the goals. So what I'm going to do is take you through goal by goal so that you can see exactly what we're doing. We wanted to lift up some of the items around special education because students with disabilities are one of our lowest performing subgroups. And so we've done an awful lot of work around the state, whether it is providing reports to districts so that they can inform stakeholders about how well these children are doing. We've produced a lot of Orton-Gillingham-based training sessions. That's a very powerful strategy, one that we know that works. And so we've trained, as you can see, almost 2,000 special ed and general ed teachers. We also do a lot of on-demand training. A lot of districts are analyzing their own data and saying, can you come out and provide training specific to our data? We have done that. And we've also started mentoring and coaching our special ed directors that have less than three years' experience. This is a big job in these districts to be monitoring special education. And so we've been trying to provide them some extra support. We also, through special education, funded 22 literacy coaches so that we could have additional coaches out supporting our schools that are in improvement around special education. Our training that you can see around the effective use of technology, that's something that's coming on much stronger, I think, for us because there are a lot of technology tools that are out there that teachers can use. And also, we launched a statewide chronic absenteeism initiative. And that was huge for us. Right now, Mississippi's chronic absenteeism rate is around 15%, but in some of our districts, it is much, much larger than that. And so we really need districts to be focusing on those children that are absent and why. We're always very proud of this slide. I use this slide everywhere I go because Mississippi is making faster progress on the NAEP assessment than most other states in the country. And we have been recognized for that again and again. In fact, this past year, Quality Counts, which is put out by Education Week, it's their annual report, recognized Mississippi as one of the five most improved states in the nation. So you can see where we are with this. We're first in the nation on our gains in eighth grade reading. This is between the years 15 to 17. We're second in the nation for our gains in fourth grade reading. We are fourth in the nation for our gains in fourth grade math, seventh in the nation for our gains in eighth grade math, and 12th in the nation for our gains in eighth grade reading. In fact, we are tied with Washington State currently as the states that have made the most progress on our NAEP assessment. We take a look also, once again, at our third graders that are passing the reading test. And we, as you remember, we've gone with this with the first try. So those students, from 15 to 18, you can see we've improved from 85 to 93%. But I want you to take a look at these bullets off to the left because those are huge. We've seen a 23.5% increase in students with disabilities. That's huge for our children. 14.6 for Hispanic and 10.5 for African-American. This next lets you know what's happening around proficiency. We're looking to see how more children are in proficient or advanced, which are levels four and five. You'll want to see those numbers going up while you'll want to see a decrease in levels one, two and three because those are not proficient. So in just a two-year period of time, we have made some pretty nice gains in levels of proficiency or advanced in both ELA and in mathematics. I love this one. Look at the green because the green's good. So if you think about green light. So this lets you know each grade level where there has been a significant change in, by grade, in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. And this continues to be, you see two years, 16, 17 and 17, 18. This continues to be great news for our state. Not where we want to be, but we have gone literally from about a third of our children being proficient and advanced to almost half of our children being proficient and advanced. So definitely significant gains. This lets you know the number of districts. We started looking at how many districts have 45% or more of their students scoring as proficient or advanced in both ELA and math. And you can see from 16 to 18, those numbers have almost tripled and have tripled in some cases. So that lets you know, right now, we've got 40 districts that have 45% or more of their children proficient or advanced in ELA and 52 districts that have the same proficient in mathematics. in mathematics. Some other indications, outcome four, we want to talk about growth. It's not just proficiency because we also look at the percentage of children that have grown. Uh, and you can see from 16 to 18, uh, we saw all growth in ELA for all subgroups. Uh, math continued to increase, and students with disabilities also can, continue to increase in growth at a significant, uh, significant rate. Goal two, we talk about students graduating from high school, college, and career-ready. Uh, we really dug in deep, once again, with special education. We have developed new alter, alternate standards for those children, uh, in science and in biology. Uh, we also provided a lot of regional trainings. Remember, with our diploma options changing, all, the alternate diploma is now viable under ESSA, so we've trained a lot of people in that. Uh, and also around the alternate academic standards because those were new, uh, for people. And also, we develop courses now for children who are earning an alternate diploma, and we are providing training to our teachers, um, as well on that. We also produced, uh, resource guides around all those things that you see in that last bullet. That goes out to our special ed teachers so that they've got additional help, um, where that is concerned. We have done an awful lot, uh, Dr. Dean mentioned, around, um, workforce. Uh, we have had a lot of meetings, uh, around, uh, the state with our community colleges, also with the SWB board, as you see, and also with the local regional workforce boards. Because one of the things we want to make sure, no matter where children are in the state, there's businesses that can use their, um, they need more people. So we want to make sure that we are producing through our CTE programs, the kind of programs that children that can graduate can go right into those, to the workforce, um, around the state and meet the needs of the local community. Uh, once again, we're looking at individual success plans. Those are plans that children, uh, produce that kind of gives them an idea where they're headed, what are their goals, what courses are they going to be taking, what are they going to be pursuing? And our counselors are the ones that are, uh, responsible for that. You remember, we worked very hard with IHL to now standardize the credit hours for advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and the Cambridge Advanced, um, classes. So now, all children that, um, take one of those exams and pass with their passing rate will automatically be granted three credit hours and up to six, depending on the course. And this is going to save a lot of parents, a lot of tuition money, if they can get these kids in these classes, taking the exams and passing, because they'll grow right into college with these, um, credits under their belt. And once again, uh, training teachers, um, in each of these areas as well. We have been working, uh, with Mississippi State and CSPR to expand our computer science initiative. Uh, that is a huge thing nationally, computer science, there's thousands and thousands of jobs around the nation for children that complete, um, a computer science. We've also added AP computer science, um, as well. We've also, if you take a look at our districts of innovation, we've got seven districts that are in districts of innovation. We've got six early college high schools and 14, uh, districts that are participating in our innovation lab. That, the concept behind the innovation lab is to learn from one another. So these are districts that gather together, uh, with a particular theme in mind, and then they can share what resources that they are using with one another and to learn, uh, from one another. And we've also partnered, obviously, with, um, CCSSO and its innovation lab leadership, uh, to look at how, what we are doing to increase, um, to accelerate, excuse me, coursework in math and English for underserved students at the middle school level. So this is something that we're really looking at. How can we start pushing some of our credit-bearing courses into our middle schools? We've got a lot of kids that are perfectly capable of that. We have some, but I think we could, um, we could use a lot more. Graduation rate, don't need to tell you, um, this is the highest it's ever been, and we are right there practically with the national average. The national average is at 84.6. We're at 84. Uh, but take a look at what happens with our students with disabilities. That's been huge for us. Um, that increase from 23.2 to 38.4 is a significant increase, um, for those students. ACT, uh, you know we administer that to all 11th graders. Uh, that's what you will see in the orange there, um, that's the composite score. And then the green are our graduating class. So those are children that may have taken the ACT more than once. So, uh, that's the composite score, um, of the children that have graduated. Dual credit, once again, more than doubled, uh, since 14, 15. Uh, and that has increased, uh, participation by all subgroups. We are also, we have revised the courses now that children can take to make sure, we did a, uh, we worked with IHL on this, actually. We mapped the courses that we offer, the dual credit courses that we are offering, to what diplomas are being offered. And so we wanted to make sure that if children were taking a dual credit course, that it meant something by the time they went to college, that it wasn't just a one-off that meant nothing for them, um, and they're not going to get it applied to any kind of diploma. So working with IHL, we have now, uh, produced a, a list of courses that we are approving because we know it maps to a diploma, and those will be the ones that we're also approving for, um, our accountability model. Dual credit participation and pass rates, um, you can see, uh, the pass rate on these classes continues to be very high, uh, as we are slowly but surely also increasing the number of children that are, are participating in, uh, dual credit. This is advanced placement. We also are looking to increase that. That bar that you see that's in dark blue at the top, that's the percent of students, um, each year that passed with a three or higher. Three or higher is considered passing, three, four, and five. But you will see across the board, um, we have looking, we are looking at huge increases in the number of children that are not only participating, but that have also reached passing scores, and that has nearly doubled. The pass rate has nearly doubled since 2013. So it's, the other thing that you need to know that's important about advanced placement, the research has shown, um, that any child that takes an advanced placement class, even if they don't pass the test, will do better in college than if they have never taken an advanced placement class ever. So we're really trying to get kids in advanced placement, but more importantly, um, getting them to pass the test. And you can see very nice increases among African-American and Hispanic students there at the bottom.
Right. Go back to the slide for just a minute.
Sure.
Do you know what happened in, uh, 2016?
16? My, it's a guess of mine, but my guess is, notice the significant, um, growth in participation. And a lot of times when you see that kind of a bump in participation, which is about, what, 2,400, 2,300 kids, it's not unusual to see a slight dip in the past because you've got more kids out there that are participating and more kids that are, that are trying to take exams. And that, that's not unusual to see that. But you can see, even though that happened, look what happened in the next year. Yeah. We still continue, and then that percent continues to go up. CTE programs, these are the number of completers. Now, remember, this is what we're counting. Sometimes you've got kids, there's four exams, and when do you, correct me if I'm wrong, there's four classes to be a completer, correct? So what we found happening was that some would take a, a course in this, in this CTE program or a course in this CTE program, in this CTE program. We're now counting those children that have completed all four classes in one program. So that's really what we will want to be, we want to see are those students that are completing CTE programs. Goal three, um, having access to high-quality early childhood programs. Uh, we have awarded, uh, five new districts, uh, blended pre-K. And remember, blended pre-K are children with disabilities, um, along with their typically developing peers. We have another, um, RF, whatever it is, QPA, what am I looking for out there? Where's Dr. Gavin when I need her? Um, anyway, we put it out there for the districts if they want to apply. We've got enough for 10 more classrooms, and the due date for that is March the 12th. So we are going to be awarding 10 more blended pre-Ks, um, after March the 12th. Of course, that'll be coming back to you. Uh, and we've got the, we're now up to, with the addition of another thousand children in our early learning collaboratives. And also, you know, we've got our Kellogg grant, and Ms. Ry brought you up to date with a, a lot that's happening with our coaches, and we're real excited about that as well. Uh, we, as you know, we have developed birth-through-grade-12 standards, and now we are looking at, and have developed birth-through-grade-12 family engagement frameworks and toolkits. So that now districts can then be holding these kinds of family engagement nights, know how to better engage families. Uh, it provides them a lot of resources, uh, on how to do that and to do that in a significant way. We've also hired a second, um, early learning collaborative coordinator to support new sites. As you know, we keep expanding that, and we also, through NASB, got a grant to provide, uh, training to our pre-K administrators. We adopted the standards, you know about that. Uh, we've also met, we continue to meet with Kellogg. Um, they're a wonderful partner for us, and we meet with them on a regular basis to keep them, uh, up to date with what we're doing. And we've also conducted, uh, two pieces of research around the impacts of our collaboratives, um, and those are on our website. Am I not right about that, Mr. Kramer? The two research studies that we've done are on our website as we speak? Yes, okay. So people can see what, and those were very positive. Kindergartens meeting, uh, the end-of-year target score, you can see from 15 to 18, we've gone from 54 to 65%. Also, uh, we're looking at the number of children with disabilities that are in early childhood programs in a general ed setting. One of the things we're trying to, um, avoid is just creating self-contained pre-K special ed classes. That's just not helpful, to put it bluntly. There's too much research out there that talks about the power of having these children in with their typically developing peers because they have language models, they've got behavior models, they've got the content that's happening in pre-K. So, uh, we think that part of this decrease that we've seen, um, has been to, uh, due to the Head Start closures as well. But that's something that we're monitoring very carefully because we want to make sure that we are including those children as much as possible. Uh, these are children in Title I or locally funded. You know, we don't have enough money, obviously, coming across from the legislature. Right now, it says 6.5 million. But bear in mind that of that 6.5 million, 2.5 million of that was one-time money only. So in order for the legislature to continue to fund at its current level, they must fund us at 6.5 million, not at four, because otherwise, you're going to be losing 2.5 million, and collaboratives will be losing on that end as well. You know, and I know we've asked the legislature for a lot more money where this is concerned, but districts are taking it upon themselves, um, to also fund locally, um, local pre-K classes. We also look at what's happening with our early learning collaboratives versus other public pre-Ks. Uh, and one of the areas that we look at are students meeting, um, kindergarten readiness scores. And you can see that, uh, our early learning collaboratives are outperforming all other groups of children. So we know what works, and that's part of what our coaches are going to be doing and with our grant, uh, is getting out to other centers to try and make them improve the quality of what, uh, the programming that's being, uh, that's being offered as well. Goal four, uh, we did a lot of revisions to this one. This is every school having effective teachers and leaders. As you know, uh, once again, we, uh, got a grant from Kellogg, uh, which was $4.1 million to pilot the teacher residency and the performance-based licensure programs. So that, we're already underway. Uh, we have partnered with the National Council on Teacher Residencies to help develop our model. Uh, I think I've mentioned to you, if I have not, um, this is really to help our teacher shortage. The teacher shortage is not just in Mississippi, it is nationally. And, um, California, just most recently, um, their legislature appropriated $75 million to put into their teacher residency program because of the shortage that they're having. We've been, uh, working on a Grow Your Own task force to try and get districts to start investing in that. Uh, a lot of people live in areas that they really don't want to leave. So if we can get them involved in a Grow Your Own, they can go through this process and then start teaching right in the community, um, in which they, uh, reside. We convened a group of, um, male educators. This was a partnership between MAE and Tugalo. We really wanted to know from them, um, what, what brought you to the profession? What is keeping you in the profession? And how can we reach out to other, uh, male minorities, um, to get them involved in the profession? So it was a day well spent. A lot of good feedback, uh, was provided to us, uh, during that process.
Dr. Wright, do we have a percentage of, uh, minority males that's in the system?
Yes, we do. And I can, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get you that. Yep. So just make a note of that over there. Thank you. Um, we also now, all of our educator prep programs have to obtain national accreditation through CAPE, uh, and that is, uh, raising the bar for them as well. Um, I think one of the concerns has been, which is the reason that we invested in the letters training, that we are not seeing teachers ready day one to know how to teach the foundational skills of reading. So we really are looking to redesign part of the teacher prep program to make sure that they have more courses in how to do that. Uh, and that's something that Debbie Burson has been leading, uh, with that, and we're redesigning, actually, the whole review process. Because I don't know about you, but I remember sitting at this table a couple of years ago, and it just felt to me like all we were doing was checking the boxes. And that's not going to solve the problem of teachers knowing how to teach if all we do is check the boxes. We've got to get in those EPPs and make sure that they are doing what they need to be doing to ensure that we get the quality in our classrooms that, um, our students deserve. Uh, we've also collaborated with SREB, another great partner, uh, in working with our professional growth system for both teachers and administrators. One of the things you'll see a lot, we are partnering with a lot of people. And the reason we do that nationally is to get everybody's eyes looking at it, not just our own. We can't be insular about this when you've got national organizations that are out there doing this work. We need to hear what they're doing, learn from them, bring it back, make it ours, but learn to find out what is, um, what's, what's working so that we can bring this back and help our own teacher pool, uh, with that. These are new outcomes that we are including now in the strategic plan. Uh, we are looking at 17, 18 as a baseline year. So next year, when I come to you with this presentation, we will have data behind, um, each of these, um, uh, each of these outcomes. What you see in blue is the current percentage. So if you're looking at the percentage of districts reporting, uh, this is a key one. Let me repeat this. The, the percentage of districts reporting the PGS ratings for teachers and leaders. We have been asking for that. Right now, we only have 41% of our districts that give us that information. So that's not helpful. We have to have 100% of our districts giving us that information. So we're also looking at, do we need to add an accreditation standard for that so that, uh, when we find out that they're not turning it in, that there's a consequence for not turning it in? If we're going to help teachers get better at their craft, we've got to know what the lay of the land looks like across the state, not just in 41% of our districts. So, um, that's one of the reasons we added that. We want to take a look at the percentage of teachers passing licensure exams on the first try, because we've had issues with that. Uh, and increasing, obviously, the number of licensed diverse teachers and leaders. Right now, we're at 29%. Um, but that's teachers and leaders together. So there's an answer to your question for teachers and leaders together, but if you wanted it broken out, we can do that as well. Reducing the proportion of inexperienced teachers in schools. We consider that anyone between zero and three years of experience, and particularly, we're looking at our high-poverty, high-minority schools. Because typically, and nationally, that is where you end up with your least experienced teachers, are in the schools that need the most experienced teachers. So that's something that we're looking, um, at as well, and also to reduce the proportion of non-certified teachers in schools in those same, uh, in those same areas. Oh, here we go. My little crafty team here. Mr. McClellan, we've got an answer for you.
All right.
So we have 6% male minority. 6% male minority. Yep. Yeah, right.
Oh.
6%. 6%. So you can see while we're looking that it needs to be increased. Children in classrooms need to see adults in front of them that are diverse. They just do. It, it sends a very powerful message. If I'm sitting in a classroom in a high-minority school, and the only person I see up there is a white person, that sends a very different message than if I'm seeing people of color. And so we've got to call it out for what it is and work on it, which is what we're...
Now, those, the, the data you gave us on the last slide, all of that was baseline data.
All that's baseline data. So what you see right now is where we are. So, um, that, we're, all the, when you say increase, we mean that, and when you say reduce, we mean exactly that as well. So we've got to be very diligent and very thoughtful about the strategies that we're employing to make sure that our schools have, um, the teachers that they need. Goal five, uh, using data, uh, to improve student outcomes. Um, this, we've, we've done a lot of revision in this, uh, as well because we felt that these, um, data points, uh, I'm going to call them, well, we needed to be more precise and measurable, but we needed them to be user-friendly. Um, not all the, uh, outcomes were stated in terms that if you read it, you would necessarily understand, um, what that means. So outcome one was to create the public-facing data system. So that's the Mississippi Succeeds Report Card. We gave you, um, a demonstration of that. We have added some things to the report cards. If you haven't visited it lately, here's some things we added. Uh, by federal law, we have to add a piece around per pupil funding. And I know this is going to be really be looked at across the street because that's something that's important to them. So you'll be able to go in by district and see, by district, the per pupil funding, and so who's spending what on, on children. Uh, we've added two other discipline elements, um, because the Office of Civil We've added two other discipline elements because the Office of Civil Rights has asked us to add that. And we've also got a cross-tab subgroup comparison at the state level. And we've also, we've got updated PDF summaries that are also updated in our, in our launch of this. I know we've had to do that because the federal law is requiring us to do that. John, do you want to respond to that? Yeah.
So, there's two things just to point out here quickly. One is that in the superintendent's annual report, there are breakdowns of administrative costs separate from here. Because this is complying with the ESA requirements in federal law, the definitions are broken down by how the money is being spent and distributed. So, federal, state, or local money being distributed by the district and spent by the district level or by the school level. So, the breakdown that you're asking for actually is in an existing report that's on the website, but the, the report card updates that we'll be bringing to the board next month will be, for these new updates, will be the ESA descriptive breakdowns.
And they're requiring all states to do that. So, that was it. We've got to pull-
What is the national recommendation? How much per child? What's the recommendation?
I don't know that they've come up with one, to be honest with you. I don't know that. I just think that they wanted it to be more transparent because they wanted communities to actually know how much money was being spent, and that's the reason we have to go by this definition. But you're right, in my superintendent's annual report, there is a breakdown of administrative versus classroom costs. This is our roadmap for looking at the Mississippi Succeeds Report Card. We are going to be engaging a lot of stakeholders around this because we know what we had to produce initially, we know what ESA has required. But we also want to know from stakeholders, what else would you like to see that's important to you on our, on our report card? So, that, as you see, will be moving through the process to do that. And we've got a, another launch coming at the end of March with additional information. Is that correct, Mr. Kramer?
Yes, it is our intention to bring to the board each quarter, the next round of updates. And of course, we can adjust this timeline based on feedback and input we get from stakeholders, including the board, legislators, et cetera.
And you'll be able to filter this a lot of different ways because that's something that we've already heard from superintendents. So, as we, it's going to become more sophisticated the further along that it gets. This is something that I'm really excited about, and Mr. Kramer and his team have been working on this. These are heat maps. And so, if you take a look, these are heat maps of just district grades. But what I want you to really look at, moving from 2016 to 2018, you will see less and less red and orange. So, I'm going to refer to this as the greening of Mississippi, right? So, what you really want to see are the, the blues and the greens, you know, and the yellows if you're looking at goal six. But notice, and I said to, I want to be able to visually see it. So, anybody that looks at it could see, moving from one year to the next, you are seeing more and more districts that are getting to be at C or higher.
That's very telling.
Yeah, I liked it too. So, thanks to Mr. Kramer and his team for making it happen. I was on him about that, and he was kind enough to comply. So, we launched our new website. So, that's up and running. We've had a lot of really positive feedback about our website. We've also, as we said, initiated a 2.0 modernization plan. As you know, we've been asking the legislature every year for more money to update our MSIS. So, we've been trying to be a little bit more creative internally about how we can do that. And Mr. Kramer and his team have really been very, very responsive about trying to get this updated so that we can, we can move into that next century. The generate tool, that was, that's already been installed, and that's going to help automate a lot of the reporting that we have to do to USED. These are, as you can see, our research. We've got researchers now in Mr. Kramer's office. And so, we've talked about what we want studied, and also, we've done presentations of those studies at national conferences to produce the results, which is really good that we've now got our own research team, which will help us. And last but not least, goal six, as you know, that all schools are rated, and districts are rated C or higher. The process that I talked to you about earlier around the interviews we did, we, well, this was 89, we're now over 100. That was the bullet, the first bullet that you see, that we accomplished with that. And then, we've also talked about collaborating with districts, really, to your point, Mr. McClellan, around how can we help them improve their levels? And you can see that 50 schools moved from an F in 2017, 18, and 69% of our districts are now earning C or higher. So, we've almost got 70% of our districts now at C or higher, which is a significant increase across the state. And then, we've got other school improvement coaches that we are deploying out to help the districts that have, that need the help the most. Regional trainings, once again, with the RCU on evidence-based interventions. This is one thing that we now are looking at drilling down. We've got a lot of children that are still below grade level, that still need a lot of help, and we've got to get teachers knowing how to provide these interventions. So, we've been providing that kind of training, and we are also meeting with our leaders in those districts. Here are, this is looking at districts with a point increase within the letter grade. So, these aren't, we thought it was one thing to look to see who went from an F to a D or a D to a C, but there are districts even within the letter grade that improve their points. So, we wanted you to see the number of districts that improved. They may not have gone to the next letter grade, but they improved their points within the letter grade that they currently had. Here, we're looking at the same thing, except with schools. So, schools that improved their points within, within the letter that they were given. And you can see, each year, it's, it's gotten better and better. Not where we need them to be, but it, they are also looking at internally. These are our districts of transformation. You'll see LaFlore has gone from an F to a C, and you've seen Tunica that's gone from a D to a C. And then, these are the grades of their schools within those districts. And once again, this is just reiterating, this is districts rated C or higher, and this is schools rated C or higher. And I've included things in here for the general public to know, things that I've participated in, presentations that I've made nationally around our work. And so, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but know that this is in the PowerPoint. We'll put the PowerPoint on the website. We'll put this document on the website so that everybody has access to, to this information. One thing I do want you to note is- Something I think it's really important that you know as a state too. It's not just me that's out there around the nation doing this work. There's a lot of people inside MDE that are out around the nation doing this work. And that just speaks volumes about the talent that we have inside this department. I mean, this, the talent inside this department is just remarkable. And we're very thoughtful about who we hire because we only want the best and brightest. And I think that's one thing, we've totally redone our whole interview process. It's a much more rigorous process than it ever has been before. But we've got a lot of people that are deployed out doing national presentations around this nation, and very proud of the staff inside this department. Couldn't be prouder of the staff. You can see how creative the little group was that was here today with their video. So, it's that kind of thinking, it's that kind of thinking outside the box that occurs across this department on a regular basis. And I can tell you that it's a group of committed people, and the sense of urgency is here in this department to make Mississippi the best it can be. And we're seeing the gains that I've showed you year after year. So, hats off to everybody that works in this department for the work that they do because it is not just a, it ain't a one-man show. It's a multi-person show that's, that's out here. So, thank you all very much.
Good report. Good report. Dr. Wright, I promise you I'm going to be quiet after this. Do we have the authority to go, to check a district if they fall to letter grade? To see why?
Yes. And, you know, I'm glad you brought that up because the answer to that question is yes, we do, and the next answer is yes, we are.
Thank you.
We sure are.
Just a couple of comments from me. Obviously, this report is outstanding. It gets me so excited when I see these results. Your team is phenomenal, by the way. Rock stars, all of them.
Yes, they are.
I've just got a couple of quick questions. I'm really, really interested on how we cascade this information. It's so powerful. I just don't want us to think, let's put it on the webpage and see what happens. I'm very curious to know the webpage hits on how many we get, how many hit this when we put it on. But how do we make sure it's cascade? I'm not saying the whole 30 pages, but some simple story that can tell the story of progress in Mississippi. And specifically, I wrote down the parents. How do, how does the parents get this information to understand the progress with their support we're making as well? Just a question in general-
Got it.
-on communication strategy. And then, a couple of quick questions. Just like you showed the most improved, like for third-grade score improvement, can we tell if we're on that same trajectory for most improved for graduation rate in the nation?
Yes, there, that is produced, each state produces a graduation rate. Now, bear in mind that each state has different qualifications for graduation. So, that's the hard part about always comparing because some states have different, all states have different requirements. It would be different if we all expected the same thing, but we all don't. But we, I can get you state-by-state graduation rate, but you wouldn't necessarily be able to know. That's why we stick with the average versus another state.
So, the example I'm giving is like, five years ago, we, we've made a 10% improvement in five years. Is that the fastest trajectory or are we?
I see what your question is now.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, are we making that same progress, just like the third-grade information? And then, on page 30, which is the number of students enrolled Title I or locally funded, out of what percentage is that? Like, are we still, is this 20% of the eligible?
So, every district has, so there's two things I think I should say about this. Number one, we've put out guidance documents to all districts around if you want to open a pre-K class, which we've strongly encouraged. Here's what you need to do, here's the money that you need to do it. And using Title I dollars is an appropriate use of their money to open up a pre-K class. Some districts will say, I just don't have the room, like, there's just no space. Other districts will say, I'll find the room because I'm opening up these classes. So, it's really a district-level decision, but the information that we continue to put out is the power of pre-K because we are seeing it. This year's class will be the first class, I believe, that's moved through our collaboratives all the way through. So, I'm going to be anxious to disaggregate that data once we get our test results back. I will now be able to disaggregate the third-grade data and say, of the children that were in our collaboratives, where are they in third grade? And then, hopefully, that's one of the reasons we've been sharing this information, to get more districts to open up their own pre-K classes. Yeah.
And I'll just make like an editorial comment. It's very interesting, I'm, I'm so happy we're focused on chronic absenteeism because I can promise you, it's one of the number-one reasons industry lose people. It's chronic absenteeism.
Wow.
It's our number-one reason for people losing their job. It's absenteeism. So, it's translating from the schools to the workplace, believe it or not. It's a big, it's a big deal.
It is a big deal. And people have got to understand that you've got to watch absenteeism because the research that Mississippi State did, and actually, the national, the research would support this, is that children that have missed, I think it's even as small as two days by the time September comes around, are more likely to become chronically absent. And parents think, well, that's just two days, but that's what the research says. So, if a school's not watching that and has, doesn't have an attendance committee that's watching that, that was a question, to be honest with you, that we posed to a district during an interview was, do you have an attend, because their chronic absenteeism rate was another piece that we looked at, was so high. And so, my question was, do you have an attendance committee that's looking at that? And the response I got was, I've got somebody back at the office that enters attendance. So, that's what I'm saying about themes that you hear. So, that lets me know that that's, they're not quite there yet, right? So, this is a time then we need to say, no, this is what you need to be doing in order to get on top of this chronic absenteeism. Yep, but thank you for that.
I want to hitchhike on Mrs. Scrub's comments because I think it's so pertinent to what we're doing. First of all, this is a tremendous report. I, like all of us, are very proud of it. On your point of absenteeism, last night, I was in the lounge at the hotel, and I, I was talking to a gentleman who is CEO of a staffing company. And he was talking about getting people to jobs in Mississippi, and he staffs a lot of companies, Nissan being one, but he mentioned about five or six. Absenteeism has gotten so bad, he has actually hired a transportation company to pick workers up at their home and get them to the job so the, so the workers can get to the job. He said, it's phenomenal. I mean, it's, it's one of the soft skills, but it's so critical to keeping people on the job. If they're not there, they, they're not there, and the jobs don't get done. But the other, the other point I wanted to make is this idea of getting this information, the report from this in the hands where it gets the most exposure. I know during the budget process, Dr. Wright and Pete, the legislators who are on that committee, the lieutenant governors and all of those who are on appropriation, they hear much of this. I'm not sure how much the other legislators know about what it is that's going on in this department. I, I would hope that we can find a way to, to get an audience because I don't want to second-guess them, but I don't know that they'll go to a website to see what's going on in the department. I think we're going to have to be more intentional about that. And these are the folks that make decisions every day about how many dollars this department gets. So, we need to really be intent, it's such good information, I just think we need to be creative, very creative about getting it in the hands of those people who impact what we are doing and can be more impactful on what we're doing. Thank you.
And I'm a, I was going to also say something with what Mr. Suggs talked about and what Dr. Kelly just, just said, and this is your decision, but I would love to see our very capable and qualified marketing team come back in the March meeting with an affirmative, actionable strategy around how the nine members of this board who have our own social networks, our own social media, our own ability to reach out, to print media, et cetera, and do messaging in a way that is assertively, you know, and affirmatively putting this messaging out. I'm totally willing to do it, and I shouldn't just do it as chair. I'd do it at, at any point, you know, during my tenure on this board. That's one of the things, you know, we've talked about and we've not really executed on, and that is, this board can influence because we all are folks who go and do our other things besides this. And I think it's, you know, not the usual suspect singing the usual, you know, song and dance. And, you know, I would very much, you know, enjoy that. So, I would say maybe a legislative strategy, a print media strategy, a social media strategy, succinct, respectfully, non-educacionese, where, you know, regular folks can see it and get it, and we can certainly help with the marketing of that. But, you know, I think that would be a, a really good presentation in March. And, you know, I'd sign up, number one, to, you know, do whatever I can to try and push some of this messaging out because we all know it's not rainbows and pony rides. I mean, there's a bunch of challenges that we face, but let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I mean, we've got really fantastic things, and we ought to be bragging about it, and maybe, I don't know, along the way, change the culture of the state, which, you know, has not traditionally, at least in the last couple of generations, been very supportive. So, thanks for that comment. That's excellent.
Another thing, this is great. I love this idea, but if we could do something like this for board members, elevator talking points, you know, just, just talking point, when you meet folks on an elevator, four or five things you can tell them about what's going on in education in the state of Mississippi. It, it could have a tremendous impact.
Bottom.
I, to kind of piggyback off what you said, I think social media, as far as being able to really publicize the things that Mississippi is doing, goes back to what the literacy coaches did. I mean, when they put that on social media, the hits and the viral that it took, something like that, that does reach so many people that not, would not normally pick up something and read it about education. Maybe they don't have children directly impacted by it. So, I feel like social media, as you said, is, is one of the ways that you can reach so many people that are not maybe directly impacted or, you know, involved with it.
Different constituencies. Different constituencies. Excellent, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for your suggestions, appreciate it.
We'll move on to action item two, approval of Mississippi Department of Education contracts. Dr. Gavin.
Good morning, we're requesting approval of four contracts. And they're actually all renewal contracts. The first one being a renewal contract with SNS Management Group. They provide security for the Mississippi School for the Blind and Deaf. The second contract is a food service contract. It's with Valley Services for the School for the Blind and Deaf. And the third contract is a renewal contract with Reading Language Arts Center, DBA Brainspring. And our last renewal that we're requesting approval on is for Riverside Publishing Company, DBA H. On Receivables.
Okay, you have the information in front of you with the backup material, any discussion? Okay, since this is an action item, I'll ask for a motion to approve now.
A motion?
At a motion and a second, any discussion?
One question, on the renewal contracts, Dr. Gavin, how much of increases were there in those contracts? Do you have that at your finger point?
I do not have that, but if you need that information, I can get it back to you.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we've got a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We've moved, as you recall, beginning of our meeting, we've got a few items that were previously in the consent agenda. That's information that we've asked Dr. Oakley, Dr. Vaneford to please come forward and discuss what was consent item four, which is now agenda item three, approval to begin the administrative procedure act process regarding districts of innovation. Why don't you just give us like, you know, one minute overview of what this is?
This policy is coming forward, we're looking within the department at just a larger review of state board policies, either as a result of legislation that's passed that requires action to create policy or just as a natural revision or review of board policies. We actually had a conversation earlier this week. I'll be working in conjunction with Ms. Amos Office as your deputy for educational accountability, looking at board policies that need to be updated. There has not been a policy in place for this, but this process for the policy establishment started last summer. As we were looking particularly at the early college high school model and trying to make sure we had some parameters in place for the approval of those and some of the requirements and definitions for what constitutes an early college high school or a middle college program. That language fits within the District of Innovation law, so we're bringing this all together at once.
Questions?
F, there has not been a policy in place in the past, this is the establishment of a new policy. Much of the language was contained in the February 2016 backup material for Districts of Innovation approval, but the language never came forward as a board policy for approval.
Or APA?
Correct. Sure.
Okay, let's see, Dr. Vaneford Field State, we've moved previous item consent agenda I to F, which is approval to modify certain licensure assessment guidelines for structured support administrative endorsement areas.
Actually losing.
Mike, there.
Yes, sir, it will help to increase speech language pathologists. We're losing them in that those who are not successfully challenging the, I'll say, the practice core assessment. We lose them to the corporate sector. And it's difficult to get them back after they've actually been introduced to a salary that's above what they're really passionate about. But to answer your question in short, yes, just that one example, we are. And it will increase that number.
Any other questions? Great. And move under the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve items A, B, C, H, and J?
Prove? I mean, I move.
Once a chairman, always a chairman. Got a motion, need a second. Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aries. The information? I thought it was information, what are we voting on? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so under consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve, I guess, what was previous items four and I, now agenda items three and four?
A motion?
At a motion, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please, I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aries, all right. I'm advised that we have two items to discuss in executive session. So unless there's major objection from our board, what I would like to do is stander take a motion to move into executive session at this point.
Ms. Chair, I move the board to consider making a closed determination on the need to go into executive session.
Okay, there's a motion, do I have a second? Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.